Okay, ladies and gentlemen, with the quorum of 236 being present. Without hearing any objection, I will waive the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. For the record, the Abbot Selectmen have called this annual town meeting and issued their warrant. Warrants have been posted, notices have been delivered per the town bylaws for our annual town meeting to be held here at 7:00 PM. And the time now being 7:04 PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up, we'd like to start with our Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise, and I'd like to welcome to our front one of our distinguished citizens, Ms. Nancy Reed, who will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Actually, I'm all short. Okay, we have the flag over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, if you could stay right there, please. I'd like to introduce the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kevin Donovan, for the dedication of the Annual Town Report.
After I mess this up. This year's 2024 Annual Town Report is dedicated to Nancy Damon Reed. Many of us know Nancy through her involvement with both the Abington Summer Concerts and Abington Celebrates Committee. But Nancy has been an integral part of the fabric of Abington her whole life. Nancy grew up in Abington and married Kurt Reed, who was a milkman at Griffin's Dairy, for those who may not remember. Her chaperoning of the champion Abington High School band that both her sons were part of earned her the title of, quote, "Band-Aid." The AHS Band was extremely popular and talented under the direction of Paul Smith Senior. This spurred Nancy to be one of the leading forces to raise money and build the bandstand as part of the complex of the town hall and library out here. Nancy was the driving force between the summer concerts program that has grown to such success that it is a destination event for as many as 1,500 people on the South Shore during the summer on Sunday evenings. Nancy has served on the Abington Celebrates Committee, serving as Mrs. Claus at the Christmas portion, and was part of the Tricentennial Committee to organize and celebrate the town's 300th anniversary. For all of Nancy's accomplishments and unselfish dedication, and on behalf of a grateful town, we dedicate the 2024 Annual Town Report to Nancy Damon Reed.
We have a long warrant to go through. There is a page in that warrant, though, and I think it's like 18, but I'm not sure. But don't read it now, because you've got to pay attention. But it is wonderful. I don't know who wrote it, but it's like who we really are. And I did learn a new word. I forget where it was. It was on TV someplace. A new word, and I don't think it's a real word either, but it's called "framily," F-R-A-M-I-L-Y. And that's how I feel about everyone in this town, all the old folks like me and all the new people. And that's why it was really great working at the library, because I got to meet a whole bunch of new people coming into our town. So I love the town, I love all the people, and so I'm asking a lot of you who haven't volunteered for anything to please keep everything going, because we especially need some young blood on all the committees, and I know there's a lot of vacancies, right, that can be filled. So think about it, and maybe you can volunteer, too. It's really not that bad. It's really great, and you feel good when you've accomplished something really well. So thank you very much. I'm very embarrassed, and it was a big surprise. And then I was wondering, Liz can tell you, does this mean I'm going to die soon? So... My mother did live to be 100, but I don't think I'm going to get that far. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, on behalf of a grateful community. Thank you, Nancy. I'd like to reintroduce the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kevin Donovan, who now lead us in a moment of silence in tribute to those town employees who passed away during the last year.
Could you kindly stand at a moment of silence for the following employees? Daniel Crane, Edward Cochran, Kathleen Creighton, James Driscoll, Anna Fopiano, James Franey, Barbara Ann Litson, John Manning, Mary Lou Morgan, Joan Murphy, Nancy Nesta, Dennis Olson, Amelian Skinny-Pastuzik, Joan Polito, and Elizabeth Betty Slinger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Thank you to all. Ladies and gentlemen, by gathering here tonight, we maintain and renew a tradition of self-governance in our democracy, which has been practiced for about 400 years. All Massachusetts town meetings are being asked this year to take a moment to specifically honor and embrace the town meetings, which were held in Abington and throughout Massachusetts 250 years ago this year, in the year 1775. Those town meetings of 1775 were the local democracies that taught Americans the virtues and responsibility of self-governance. It was through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial American public embraced the inalienable right of self-determination, independent of a king's control, which in turn sparked a revolt and fueled a revolution. In response to the American public's vocal opposition to its tyranny, one of the first acts undertaken by the king was to try to restrict the rights of Americans to hold what was called "those wretched town meetings." One historian wrote that the birth of the American democracy was successful, quote, "because Americans had learned the art of coming together and talking things out in their town meetings." Here in Abington, just two weeks after the infamous Boston massacre, residents came together at our town meeting held on March 19, 1770, and voted to endorse and publish a proclamation in the Boston Gazette called "The Noble Resolves," which was authored by Abington resident Joseph Greenleaf. The Noble Resolves called for citizens to join together to object to tyranny, to boycott goods sold by the monarch, and to publicly support the protection of our civil liberties. Citizens throughout the American colonies held meetings, published letters, held rallies, and volunteered to fight against the monarchy and establish our independence. The Noble Resolves published by Abington's town meeting was believed by many to have helped inspire the wording of the Declaration of Independence some six years later. Families in Abington were directly affected by the effort required to protect our civil liberties. Please join me in a moment of silent remembrance to honor those Abington residents who sacrificed their lives during the Revolutionary War in our fight to resist the king and establish our American democracy, and whose names now appear on the screen. One more click. There they are. Let us remember the citizens who attended our town meetings and voted to resist tyranny and instead create a new nation under God, indivisible, which has for a quarter of a millennium aspired to embody all the freedoms that make America what it is and what it hopes to be. They fought for our right to peacefully assemble here tonight and to act as free citizens according to the dictates of our conscience and in the best interest of our town, and by extension, our country and the world. The voices raised 250 years ago, the actions taken, the financial support committed, and the lives and liberties pledged at many town meetings held throughout the Commonwealth remain our worthy heritage. May our actions here tonight pay tribute to their lives and further strengthen and secure the rights of today's citizens to enjoy the liberties which our town meetings seek to preserve as we recommit ourselves in this year of 2025 to accept the continued responsibilities of protecting our democracy in the years to come. Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome you now to the start of this town meeting of April 7, 2025. My name is Sean Riley, and I am the Town Moderator. Whether this is your first time attending our town meeting or if you're a regular attendee, we welcome you, all of you, and we thank you for your participation. We will be using some available technology that is built into this auditorium tonight, and we shall try to display each article as we address them. However, please note that the printed warrant that you picked up on your way in is the official warrant and contains the articles, so if there's any discrepancies between the content in your warrant and that which appears on the screen, it's the language in your warrant or in the stated motions, which will control unless otherwise noted. And please note that a copy of the proposed budget is attached at the end of your warrant. Please allow me to introduce to you our Town Clerk, Leanne Adams, who is seated right here to my right, our Town Councilor, Greg Corbo of KP Law, who's seated in front of me below. Seated to my left are members of Abington's Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of Abington residents who volunteered a review and analyzed each article, which will be before you here at town meeting tonight. The current members of the Finance Committee are Greg Belizarian, Abigail Gendrow, Chris Murphy, Sarah Poole, and Barbara Ray, together with the Chairman of the Fincom, Matt Sala. I'd also like to thank Andrew Leveralt, Daniel Eddy, and Marty Golightly, who served throughout this year or during this year on the Finance Committee as volunteers. Matt Sala, the Chairman, will be speaking to you throughout this evening to offer motions on most of tonight's warrant articles. I'd also like to welcome our Town Manager, who's also sitting in front of me, Mr. Scott Lambiase. Mr. Lambiase and our Town Department Heads have been working very hard to prepare for this town meeting, and Mr. Lambiase will later be taking part in the presentation of some of the articles and to answer any relative relevant questions. We ask you to abide by the following rules and guidelines during our town meeting in order to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or simply just to listen to the debate. Please approach one of the microphones that are in the aisles if you would like to speak or if you have a question, and the Moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment. Please remember to state your name and your address before you begin speaking so that our Town Clerk can properly record the minutes of this town meeting. Please make sure you keep all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed, and we do not make personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of any issue. If the Moderator believes that a speaker is straying from the issues, I will have the right to direct the speaker to limit his or her portion of the debate to the issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. I understand that many of you may have children or others at home that you may need to contact or they may need to contact you at some point in the meeting. We ask that you please silence your cellphones at this time and ask that you take any phone conversations out into the lobby in consideration of those who may be sitting near you. In case of any emergency, I've been asked to tell you, if an emergency arises and we need to evacuate, please note the various emergency exits that may be available to you. Those exits are located on the left and right side, in the middle of the auditorium, in the back of the auditorium, and also here to the left and right of the stage. I've already appointed tellers who help us count at any time if we need a standing vote tonight. They are aware of their assigned sections. And I also need to start the meeting by appointing a deputy moderator for this coming year, so I ask that you vote to approve the appointment of former moderator and current Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kevin R. Donovan, as our deputy moderator throughout the evening. I remind you that I will ask for those who want to vote in favor of a motion to signify by saying "aye," and I will ask for those who oppose to a motion to signify by saying "no," so let's use this first vote as a little practice. So all those in favor of appointing Kevin R. Donovan as our deputy moderator, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Thank you. All those who oppose, say "no." Thank you. Excellent. Never wanted to be unanimous. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Kevin. Please understand, in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's town meeting, the subject must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it was originally printed or to propose new wording with updated information or to oppose an article, which we call "passing over" an article. If you have any questions about procedures or how to do something, please feel free just to ask. We will do our best to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on before I actually ask you to declare your votes. Before we begin with a review of the articles in the warrant tonight, the Moderator would like to recognize our Town Manager, Scott Lambiase, for the purpose of providing you with a summary and general review of our town government and some of the issues that will be addressed throughout tonight's town meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome Mr. Scott Lambiase.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here tonight and participating in one of the most important functions of our local government. Town meeting is democracy at its most direct, and your involvement tonight will make it work. Before we get into the warrant articles, I, too, would like to take a few moments just to talk about where we stand financially, how we arrived at this budget, and what we're doing to prepare for the future. But let me begin by thanking the people who made this meeting and the budget process possible. Our department heads deserve a great deal of credit. Not only do they work hard every day to provide the essential services to the residents of Abington, but they also play a critical role in preparing for town meeting. They work as a team, and each of them meets with the Finance Committee to present their budgets, explain their challenges, and discuss their operations. Their teamwork and collaboration are what keep the town running. Now, Finance Committee has met weekly for several months, carefully reviewing the budgets, capital requests, and long-term operational concerns. They weigh all the information presented and balance it against the fiscal realities we face and the ability of our residents to keep up with the rising costs. Their thoughtful and thorough work is essential to the process, and I want to thank them for their dedication. Our Board of Selectmen has taken a very active role in looking ahead and thinking strategically. They've been reviewing every opportunity to reduce costs, including outsourcing certain services, selling vacant buildings or parcels of land that no longer serve the community, and they'll also be forming a fiscal sustainability group that will begin meeting this fall to prepare for FY '27 and help guide the town through some structural challenges that we know are coming. I also want to acknowledge and thank our elected officials at the state and federal level who continue to advocate for us: State Senator John Keenan, State Representative Allison Sullivan Almeida, and Congressman Stephen Lynch. They work hard to represent us on Beacon Hill and in Washington, and we truly appreciate their continued support. Most importantly, though, I do have to thank you all, the residents, and the many volunteers who serve on boards and committees and commissions. They all show up at meetings like this to engage in this process. This is your town, and your involvement is what makes it work. So thank you for being here tonight. This year's proposed budget is a level service budget, and that means that we're funding programs and services we currently have in place, meeting our contractual obligations, but we are not expanding our services or adding positions. We are using free cash and one-time funds to balance this budget, and this is obviously not a sustainable or viable long-term solution for us. We have a significantly watered-down capital plan that we're going to present tonight, and within that capital plan, we are also using free cash. We're going to ask to use some stabilization money, and we're also going to include some borrowing. Again, these are solutions that we have come to get us through this year. Some departments came to us this year and made some reasonable requests, and some of those requests included staffing, but unfortunately, we're just not able to do that at this time. We have new growth that remains flat for us, and monies that we had sort of hoped for in revenue from marijuana operations have not really come to fruition. We have limited support from the state. Our state aid increased approximately 1.6%, and that really doesn't come close to keeping up with inflation or the actual cost we're seeing at the local level. Costs for things like health insurance, utilities, fuel, contracted services, and insurance premiums are rising at 5, 7, and up to 10%. And with fixed revenue limits at Proposition 2.5, we're continually and increasingly constrained in how we can respond to these costs. We're not alone in this, and across the region, towns are grappling with the same issue. This year, the towns of Duxbury, Whitman, Hanover Hansen, Norwell, and Milton are all pursuing Proposition 2.5 overrides. Requests are ranging from 2.5 million to 9.5 million just to maintain level services. That's why we're taking steps to be proactive. As I said, the Board of Selectmen is continuing to explore savings opportunity wherever possible, includes outsourcing where practicable, evaluating underused municipal properties that we can sell, and the convening of the fiscal sustainability group. As part of this broader strategy, you'll see an article tonight that also proposes the creation of the Trash Enterprise Fund. Right now, the trash and recycling collection, which costs this town roughly $1,200 per year, is funded entirely through the operating budget. This article proposes transitioning to a fee-based model over five years, using free cash in the early years to cushion the change. The intent is to preserve services and bring more financial stability to our operating budget. We will talk more about that when the article comes up, I'm sure. But we have worked hard to build a budget that reflects our community's needs while recognizing our limitations. We made some tough choices, and there are more ahead, but we're committed to working through them together. So again, thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of the process, and please let's get started.
I do also want to thank Congressman Stephen Lynch, who was going to be here tonight, and his office called me this afternoon. He is hung up in DC with a few issues have arisen as of late, so he is in Washington. I'd like to note that Senator John Keenan is here. We appreciate your attendance and all the work you do, John. And I know that Representative Almeida Sullivan would like to be here, was unable to attend. But again, thank you for all of the work that you provide for us in Boston and in Washington, DC. Okay, if there aren't any general questions, I'd like to get started right away with the meeting here, and we're going to turn to the warrant, which hopefully you all have a copy of. Matt Sala will be, again, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, will make the initial motion after I bring each warrant onto the floor. We're going to start what we call the Consent Agenda. Articles 1 through 5 are five routine articles that we normally see at town meeting, which normally don't get any real debate. You are free to debate if you'd like to, but the Consent Agenda will take one vote to approve Articles 1 to 5 to be a little more efficient and move things along. So Article 1 is the annual funding of student transportation for out-of-district students that go to some of our vocational schools. Article 2 is the health imperative funding of $5,000 for violence prevention and intervention for services for sexual assault and domestic violence victims. Article 3 is for the Arc of the South Shore funding for $2,500 for residents of Abington with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Article 4 is matching grant funding, where we post $25,000 for matching grant opportunities that may arise during the coming year. And Article 5 is the St. Patrick's Day Parade Overtime and Details funding for $20,000. Is there anything to be... Well, let me ask Matt first to make the motion. Go ahead, Matt.
First, Matt Sala, 25, George Gillespie Way. Welcome, everyone. The Finance Committee moves approval of Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,490 for Article 1, $5,000 for Article 2, $2,500 for Article 3, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for Article 4 and $20,000 for Article 5, all for the purposes stated in each article as presented.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Articles 1 through 5 with the funding sources cited by Mr. Sala's motion. Is anyone have any question on any of the Articles 1 through 5? If you do, please stand. Yes, ma'am. Please recite your name and address.
Hi. Melody Olson, 32 Brookfield.
32 Brookfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the $20,000 for the police detail, is that for 2025?
That would be for next year's parade.
The next year's parade?
Right, March of 2026. All the budget articles that are being approved tonight are for the budget year, which starts July 1 of 2025, and carries us through June 30 of next year, 2026.
Thank you. Why would it be on a consent agenda? I almost saw that it was only on one other year. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, all of these articles have been previously voted separately, and we started the Consent Agenda a few years ago to try to put those articles together that routinely are approved relatively quickly, but everyone has a right to ask questions before we do so.
I didn't see anything in the 2023 town meeting to approve any money for the parade.
I don't recall.
Yeah, I watched the whole thing. I didn't see anything. So I'm wondering if we should not have a consent agenda and have it separate.
We can...
That's all. Oh, I don't...
Is that a motion? Okay.
It's just, in my opinion, I think that the parade, with the financial strength of the town and asking us to pay for trash, and I think the parade's amazing, but right by the end of my screen, it's great. I think it should be self-sufficient, as so many other things in town, they use their own money and pay for their own bills. I know it's for the police, and I think the police are amazing, too. It's not about that. It's just about, I don't think we should be paying for a parade. We wouldn't have this cost if it wasn't.
Well, let me do this to move things along. We'll take Article 5 out of Consent Agenda. We'll be voting on Articles 1 through 4 only, and then we'll take up Article 5 separately, okay? Anything else we heard, let's go Article 1 through 4. If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, we're going to amend this motion to include only Articles 1 through 4 with the funding sources cited by the Finance Committee. All those in favor of approving Articles 1 through 4, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, say "no." It's unanimous. Now, Article 5 comes to the floor. Article 5 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $20,000 to pay for overtime and details of the public safety officials who worked during the St. Patrick's Day Parade, or any other action relative there, too. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of Article 5 and to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 for the purpose stated in the article.
Is there anything else to be heard on Article 5? $20,000 to fund the St. Patrick's Day Parade details? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 5 as motion, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, say "no." The ayes have it. Thank you. Article 6. Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2, to establish a solid waste hauling enterprise fund beginning on July 1, 2025, etc. It's all printed up on the screen, and in your warrant, the Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'm sorry, the Chairman of the Finance Committee. Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as presented and to transfer the sum of $1.2 million from free cash to fund this article.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. I apologize to Chairman of the Selectmen. We only do this once a year, so I've got to get in the groove. The Moderator would like to recognize the Town Manager, Scott Lambiase, to speak on Article 6.
Down there after this, okay. So as we take up this article, I want to provide some context about what you're proposing and why we think it's necessary, and how we plan to implement it in a way that's fair, transparent, and responsible. Right now, the town of Abington funds residential curbside trash and recycling entirely through the general operating budget. This cost is about $1.2 million. We carry a little more because of the municipal side of it. With these costs rising fast, it's becoming harder to sustain this without affecting other critical services. Since FY '18, the waste hauling costs have increased 56% from $937,000 to nearly $1.4 million. There's no sign these costs are stabilizing, and we're also facing uncertainty around the future availability of the free cash which we're using. This article proposes creating a trash enterprise fund, which would shift the cost of the services off the general tax base and into a user-fee model similar to how water and sewer is funded. The fund would be dedicated solely to waste and recycling services, and any fees collected would be restricted to that purpose. We're not implementing this all at once. Instead, we're proposing a five-year phased approach. We are planning to use free cash to soften the transition, recognizing the 1991 and the 2008 Proposition 2.5 overrides that helped fund this trash services in the past. So year 1, the town would cover 100% of the proposal with the $1.2 million in free cash. In year 2, we would fund 75%. In year 3, the town would fund 50%. In year 4, the town would fund 25%. In year 5, it would be completely user-fee at that point. The plan would have residents who are 70 and older will pay half the standard rate in that... Right now, we propose in the final year of the program, it'd be approximately $400 per household for regular trash pickup and $200 for a senior over 70 rate. I do want to stress that nothing else about the service is planned to change. We intend to use the same trash hauler. Recycling days would be the same. Your barrels would be the same. The rules would be the same. Nothing would change, except unfortunately, you would receive a quarterly bill. There's also an opt-out program, so if the residents do not want to participate in this, are welcome to go and contract with their own private hauler. They must be a licensed contractor with the town, and you just have to show proof that you've contracted with them. The Board of Selectmen would set this fee each year on an annual basis based on the actual cost of the previous year of the program. The estimates that we are sharing are based on current conditions. There is obviously no guarantees that hauling costs won't rise again or continue to rise, and there's no guarantee that free cash will always be available. That said, we figure, we feel that this is a fair and balanced approach based on the information that we do have today, but our intention is not just to set this program and then forget about it. The town fully intends to monitor the program closely. We'll continue to evaluate alternatives and continue for looking for ways to better deliver the service at a cost-effective and equitable way that's based on you... the service at a cost-effective and equitable way that's based on usage eventually and sustainable. This article will give us structure and flexibility we need to prepare for the future, as I spelled earlier. Make sure I don't take your notes.
Thank you, Mr. Lambieacy. Finance Committee has made a motion to approve Article six as presented. Is there anything to be heard on Article six? If you'd like to speak, please approach a microphone, and please start by stating your name and your address clearly, so that the town clerk can record that information. Yes, ma'am, I'd like to. It's on, I think? No, it's on.
Now?
Oh, now we can, yep.
All right. I have several concerns about this, but the first.
Name and address, please, first, if you want.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Martha Kraft, 175 Damon Road, Abington, Mass.
Better be.
Just checking. My first concern is, where did you start calling people 70, senior citizens, and what happened to those that are younger than that, that are senior citizens? As far as I know, senior citizens come anywhere from 50 on up, but 62 would seem to me to be the oldest, the youngest of the senior citizens.
One second, Mr. Lambieacy. Do you want to ask a couple of questions, and then we'll have them answered, or do you want to try to go one at a time?
One at a time, is that right?
All right. We'll let you go for a little while here. So, Mr. Lambieacy, the question is, I believe the question is, how did you set it at 70? Is that right?
It's for the, for seniors, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there was a, there was a working group that met and looked at all of this. Excuse me? So anyway, there was a working group that met, and then we discussed all of this. Within that, there were representatives of the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, we had representatives from the town financial departments, and we had to come up with a plan, and we looked at, I believe that the water department at one point in time used that as a, as a reference point of where they started their discounts. I don't believe they do it anymore, but that was really where we landed on the number.
Is that number written in stone, or can you go back to consider that? Because I think people who retire earlier than 70, maybe on a lower income, and that's a lot of money.
Yeah, no, and as I said, there's a full intention to continue to monitor this program. We actually want to put a group together that will come up with other alternatives, or look into this and say things like this that may work better in the future, or maybe that that age should be lowered, and see how that affects the other side of the group.
Okay.
Mrs. Kraft, go ahead, if you have another question.
Yes, I think so.
If not, there's people behind you can ask, and you can come back.
Okay, you know what, I think that, I think that for now is that I'll come back after everyone else, if they'll probably ask my question today.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
Rose Perry, 20 Kimber Circle. I just have a question first, because I'm not familiar with your terms. When you say free cash, what is, what is that?
Yeah, that's a good question, because it doesn't sound right, does it? But, yeah, it's, it's, at the end of the year, we'll work out this budget this year, and the department heads will get their budget for the year, and they're actually, they're very good, and they don't spend all of that. So next year, that money that we've already put out, what they don't spend, and then we have our revenue projections that are also set in stone for this year. If our revenue projections, if our revenue actually comes in higher than those projections, that money, that difference is what becomes free cash, and it's just money that's available. It's still your money, it's still your tax money, and that's why we come to town meeting to appropriate it.
Okay, so now my, my comment, based on the tax overrides that we've had regarding trash, so is it, is my understanding correct that there is currently tax money that we're paying that goes to trash?
There's tax money, yeah, I mean, it's one big part of money, and.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm wondering, if, if that's, that override was for trash, if that money, if that override, the money for that, I'm not expressing myself well.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I think I can answer it. I think, yeah, there was an override, and some people feel that the override was specifically just for trash, and never should have been spent on anything else. However, that's just not how the budget works, it's just not how general budget works. There's a general fund, and there's other services that have also grown. So we don't have control, the, things have grown, and I mentioned that earlier, things have grown, whether it's our health insurance costs or our utility costs, and they've gone 7%, 10%, 8%, but nothing grows as much as trash. Trash has gone up 56%. As these other things grow, there's still that, that other pile of money only grows by 2.5% plus some factors for revenue and new growth. So, yes, there was those overrides, but they're, again, the monies that we've been attributing to it every year has been, you know, $1.4, $1.6 million.
Thank you, Mr. Lambieacy. Are you all set? All right, sir, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Ben Olytsky, I live in 14 Coburn Lane.
Go right ahead.
The question that I have is, I've come from Brockton, and we did pay-as-you-go, we had, was Brockton Bags. Have you guys explored doing Abington Bags, pay-as-you-go?
Yep, that, the group did look at a lot of different options, and matter of fact, the state, that seems to be their model option. It, it really was much, it's a, it's a big change, and it's a big change all at once to go into that. Again, I think that we'll continue to look at this program and other programs out there, but that one does require folks that they have to actually, you know, go to a store, buy the bags, hope that the store has the bags, the bags are pretty expensive as well, and then it requires us to have that ability, and our contractor to have that ability to actually monitor those bags when they get dumped into the dump truck. So it is a program that works in other communities. I know there's communities, Plymouth, Duxbury, I think maybe Hanson does it, where they're bringing it to a transfer station, but I think for curbside, it's a lot more difficult, especially our type of curbside, where we need to have the totes, we want the totes closed, we don't want rodents getting into the totes, so it's very hard to monitor it.
Thank you, Mr. Lambieacy. Do you have a follow-up?
I do. I'd rather, honestly, go to the store and buy bags and shell out $400, I'd rather pay-as-you-go. I mean, you know, bags are two bucks apiece, you know, that's, you know, 200 bags.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, and there is another microphone on this aisle, if anyone needs one. Yes, you're, you're right up.
Julie Nelson, 31 Paragon Road.
Go right, go right ahead.
I'm speaking the words on behalf of my father, John Nickley, also 31 Paragon Road, who couldn't be here tonight. So, in 1992, the people of Abington voted for a Prop 2.5 override to cover the cost of continued trash pickup to be included in the regular town budget for the amount of $595,000. In 2008, we again approved a town-wide override vote for continued trash pickup for $655,000. After the first years of these overrides, the dollar amounts are added to the town's tax base and are subject to a 2.5% annual increase in perpetuity. Compounded for 32 years at 2.5%, the $595,000 has now become over $1 million added to the current tax collections. The $655,000 override compounded at 2.5% for 17 years is now worth over another $1 million. This means that these two overrides should be providing the town more than $2 million of the taxpayers of Abington's money this year to pay for a $1.2 million trash bill. This leaves $800,000 for the town leaders to spend on any other budget item they choose. It's also worth noting that this current $2 million will go up by 2.5% annually ad infinitum. As one can see by this math, the taxpayers of Abington have generously supplied more than enough money to pay for the trash collection to be included in a regular budget in perpetuity. Current town leaders should consider that all previous leaders have refused to change the use of these trash collection funds in the past, even through some really rough times. It seems that the current leaders may be trying to go around the will of the people who voted in two town-wide elections to take the appropriated monies at a town meeting with just a small percentage of the townspeople here tonight. My request to town leaders is this: If you would like more money from taxpayers for trash, please do it the right way. Adopt an override question for the whole town to vote on. Please do it at the midterms or the presidential election cycle, so that most people may vote on it. Trying to take this money from what it was designated for by the few people here is not just. I urge all here to do the right thing. Vote this article down and let the whole town decide if an override is appropriate. If the right thing is not done tonight, should Abington voters trust that leaders will use funds as intended in our town's future? John Nickley.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lambieacy, do you have, if you want to speak? Next person at the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Beth Owens, 28 Pond Street. So I don't want to necessarily like get my job involved, but I do work for elder services in the state of Massachusetts. I don't know if anybody is in here that cares if you're between the ages of 60 and 69. State of Massachusetts considers them a senior, elder, whatever you want to call yourself, with respect. So I kind of feel like people should have an input on that, because I don't know if there's anybody in here between the ages of 60 and 69, but according to your age 70, that a bunch of random people decided to get together and pick out of wherever, they're all getting screwed with that discount that you're offering, which after four years ain't much. The document that the Health Department so graciously threw out today on Facebook, "Thank you so much for also offering us to pay your health insurance premiums." Mine goes up every year. It's going to go up again in July. Is anybody willing to pay my Blue Cross insurance premium? I don't want us people to get laid off, and I understand it's, oh, we want to attract people and keep them, but it's, it's not right. We shouldn't be absorbing, anybody who has a job, you get an increase in your premium? Who pays it? You do. Why am I now paying it and a town employee is not? But to lump that in to a reason as to like fear monger people into okaying this, it's nonsense. It's absolute nonsense. And then to throw out a comment from the Board of Selectmen, it was like, "Selectmen Jesus is offering this as a resolution. We're not going to rip the Band-Aid off real quick, we're going to do it really slow, and every year it's going to be a slight increase and a slight increase. At the end of the day, it's still the big increase." So you're not showing people like the real picture of like what it actually is, the $400 bucks, and I'm sorry, but it's not pulling the Band-Aid off slow. If a cost of living increase goes up this much, and the trash goes up this much, guess what? It all breaks even, and you still have nothing. You check your 401K today, Amanda? I did.
Hey, we're not going to bring personalities or people into any discussion. We'll talk policy and opinions.
Rich Nagraley, 340 Diane Circle. So are you telling me the town, when it does an override, it just goes right to the general fund? Is that how this town does it?
That's, as far as I know, how every town in the Commonwealth does it.
It all goes into the general fund and not separated? I mean, you do an override for a school that goes into the general fund?
It's an operational override, it goes into the general fund.
I just, all right, okay.
Just to note, I think, just to clear, Rich, there's, I'm just the moderator, but there's two different things between an override and a debt exclusion. So if, when the town votes for a debt exclusion to borrow money to build a building, that's for the building. If the town votes for what they call an operational override, you're funding the operational budget. That's just some point of information for the general public. This gentleman, I believe, is next.
Lewis Inbrad, 25 Coleman. My question is, if this does not pass, I know that there's the potential for budget cuts, and we're not really sure where those are going to go. So my question is, if the budget cut goes towards trash, would that be that you guys could change our recycling to every other week, or completely kick trash off our record and like Hanson does? Or is that something we have to vote on again at the next town hall, if there's any specific changes to the current plan now?
Thanks, sir, Mr. Lambieacy, or who would like to take that question?
I'll take this one.
Mr. Sala.
So to start, if this article does not pass, literally nothing in the budget changes for this year, because this year, the town is covering the full cost of the program, paid for with, as mentioned before, free cash, which is neither free nor cash. But it, it won't change anything in the budget this year. I know there, but there's been a lot of talk about if we don't pass it, there will be cuts from departments X, Y, or Z, but there are, there are not specific cuts this year for this fiscal budget that we're, that we'll be voting on soon. The town is, the town is covering the cost of the trash program entirely this year, so it doesn't, doesn't matter one way or the, or another, it matters for the years, the years to come. And as for your question about every other week for recycling and, and other such programs, those are, the, the committee that has been working on this for months, there are a lot of different things. We did talk, as a gentleman in the awesome Pac-Man sweatshirt mentioned before, we did talk about pay-as-you-go and, and pay by, pay by bag, and, and there was a lot of overhead involved in that, and a lot of trying to, trying to come up with the exact pricing for the bags, trying to enforce it, and through the, through looking at the different options that were before us, this particular option where the service to the town remained the same, and the, the people of the town would see no difference as far as how their trash was picked up and what they would do, seemed to be the, the best of all options and the most fiscally responsible of the different options.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Do you have a follow-up, sir?
Yes, we'll make sure. So we're good this year, and then next year, the budget could be that our town doesn't do trash. That's a possibility, or is that a possibility?
Next, if this doesn't pass next year, we will have to figure out what we're doing with the, with the trash.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, over here. Nope, you got to come to a microphone, Mr. Keel.
Just a point of information first, and that's with regard to, what was it, overrides versus debt exclusions? It's my understanding that an override, you're voting for an override for a particular thing for that year only, and then the money goes into the general fund after that, if that makes it any clearer than what was. But so then a debt exclusion, which I hope when I say this, it's not on the, on the thing, but like when we voted for the, for the new fire station, was that then a debt exclusion versus an override?
That's correct.
Okay, so hopefully maybe that helps to clear that a little more. The other two things I just want to speak in support of is that some use of bags, because I live alone, I put my trash out once every three to four weeks, and I don't feel that I should have to pay the same thing as someone who's, and I've got neighbors who basically live alone, too, and they've got three barrels out there. So I think there's got to be some way for a little bit of use, I don't know how to say it, but you know, something that is just for me and for them, too. They've got to pay their fair share, and I have to pay my fair share. And if you're going to have any kind of a study committee, I'd be glad to volunteer to be on it, so.
Got your name.
Pass on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this gentleman was next in line, and then we'll come to this microphone. Yes, sir. If you could state your name and address once again.
Ben Olytsky, 14 Coburn Lane. How many registered voters live in Abington? Okay, 16,000, if every person bought one bag, wouldn't that be $16,000 a month, times 12?
16,000 voters.
Pay-as-you-go.
I don't, real quick, I don't think it's 16,000 voters.
Let me, yeah, it's, sorry. 16,000-ish residents, about 10,000 registered voters. I'm sorry, could you repeat your comment question?
Well, based on the, the amount of registered voters in Abington, if there's even, if there's 5,000, 5,000 times two is $10,000 a month, times 12 is $120,000. That's a lot of money. How do we get pay-as-you-go on an article to vote in the future? I mean, after listening to the other lady, you know, she only has, you know, if she had one bag a month, she would pay for one bag a month.
There are options for citizens petitions that you could look into for next town meeting.
And just real quick.
I'd be very interested in helping with that.
Yep. As, as Scott mentioned, one of the, one of the keys for me as part of the committee that was looking at this was that this, this isn't a final thing, we're continuing to look at all of the options. This was the option that looked the best for right now, and certainly would not be a set it and forget it. It would be a evaluate it as we start doing it and see, do we think that it's treating everybody fairly? Do we think that it's the right way for the town to go? Do we see other options? Are there towns around us or towns elsewhere that are doing something else that's working better that we could then adopt and adapt for ourselves? So it's definitely not something that we were finished with, with the vote here tonight.
That's why we have town meeting every year. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
Emily Greske, 40 Dale Street. I'm just curious, in arriving at the discount for seniors, was any consideration given to low-income residents?
Actually, it did, it did come up. We did talk about it. We did have one member of the committee who wants us to look into it, so we are going to continue to look into whatever the program, but it's based on usage overall. I think the, the most equitable solution that somewhere in the future is more of a you-pay-what-you-throw type of program, but we certainly are going to continue to look at that aspect of it too.
Mr. Sala, do you have anything to add before I move on? No. This young lady in the white jacket.
I don't think you're referring to me as a young lady.
Yes, I am. Name and address, please.
Catherine Salem, 22 Lantern Lane. You've talked about an opt-out program, and my concern is the enforcement of that. Right now, for example, if I call and say I have extra recycling, what do I do with it? They say, go put it in your neighbor's because it's all the same pool. And because it doesn't matter, we're not each paying for it individually. And I imagine that would be the same with trash. And my concern is, what if my neighbor decides they're opting out and they're supposed to have a company come and pick theirs up? I just don't want to see the trash dumped all around town or all of a sudden put into my basket because I'm paying for it. And I don't know what kind of enforcement considerations you've put into place for this.
As, I can always start to take this one. As Scott mentioned earlier, one of the, one of the tenets of the opt-out program was that you would have to provide proof of contracting with a, with a removal company for yourself. So I, I
So it would have to be weekly contracting? Because I'm, I'm thinking somebody could contract for once a month and then on those alternate weeks decide they're going to put it in everybody else's trash?
I don't know on, on that one, Scott. I'm not sure if you do, but
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to the, to that, but I, I will say the, the Board of Health and the Health Department currently are the ones that go around and drive around town and check your trash. And occasionally people will see a little post-it note on their, their trash if the lid's too full and things like that. So there is inspection currently as to what's going on. So I don't, inspection is a concern in general because there's cost involved with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. This young lady right here at this mic.
Hi, Jacqueline Boprey from 144 Bank Street. Three questions. How much free cash do we have and what percent of our annual budget is it?
This current year, we're sitting a little over $4 million.
Okay. And I'm only seeing that this is really pertaining to next year. Is it correct that what you've proposed for the scaling up is something that we still have time to decide over the coming year and subsequent years?
Yeah.
So if people weren't happy with 70 as the age when you're considered a senior citizen, we could change that?
I think we would definitely look at, at all aspects of it.
Okay.
And I think something else to mention here is, we're probably the only town around that isn't doing it this way, so we're not reinventing the wheel. There are a lot of different methods to it. Whitman has gone to this program many, many years ago. And other towns have done it. And towns have come up with other options that are not as attractive as this one. Some of the towns are lucky enough that they have transfer facilities, but you're required to go to that transfer facility. You're required to go and buy the bags. You're required to go there and, and drop your stuff off. Though a lot of towns don't offer the curbside pickup whatsoever. But the towns that do it have been doing it for a long time. So as far as policing it and monitoring it, it's, we're not reinventing the wheel. But yes, again, like we do fully expect this is a new program for us, but we want to do it right. So we're not going to, as we've said, just implement it and then walk away. The idea is to continually find ways to make it more equitable or more affordable.
And last question. So I work in a school department in another town, and I know they have a very large composting program to reduce the amount of solid waste and therefore the cost to the district. Do we have anything like that? And is our school system any large dumpster cost to the town implementing anything like that?
We don't currently, we do offer compost bins at a very reduced rate through the Board of Health, the Health Department. Matter of fact, Chris Schultz was with us. We had two forums on this recently, and he did bring them down to show people that we have them. For $35 is the number. It's a nice big bin. Look, the, the, the biggest expense and the biggest reason the expense is so high, it's being, it's all weight-driven. It's tonnage. And anything we can do, and the food waste is probably one of the biggest parts of that, anything we can do to compost and save on that will reduce the cost overall. That cost goes down, then the fee would go down as well.
So to follow up, is the school, school department doing anything to compost since they're one of the biggest waste producers?
Won't answer for the school. I don't believe they're doing anything right now, but
Okay, thank you.
Something that I think we could talk about in the future.
Thank you very much. A nice gentleman there in the dark jacket.
Lawrence Keough, 80 Battery Street. Just to be perfectly clear, so everybody knows, when you say we are covered for the next year, and I believe the answer to this young lady covered that, are we talking till June 30th, the fiscal year, or are we talking the calendar year, or are we talking until the next town meeting?
The, until the next town meeting. It is the fiscal year starting on July 1st of 2025, ending June 30th of 2026.
So we're good until June 30th of 2026?
Correct.
Just so everybody knows.
Yep.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Keough. This gentleman here with the baseball hat.
Tony Del Gallo, 600 Chestnut Street. I look at, at a problem like this as a, you know, business owner, and is there any reason why we don't own our own trash trucks? I mean, we got $4 million in a free cash fund. We can't buy a couple of trash trucks and have some payments and then give a couple of town employees a job? And then why can't we do that? We have dump trucks. We have tree trucks. We have everything else in this town. Why don't we have dump trucks that we could use for trash trucks or nice trash removal trucks? Wouldn't be that expensive. It might look nice in the town that we have our own little system going. Like, I don't understand why you guys want to charge the residents that already pay enough. And we already got crappy enough services as it is. The roads suck, you know, like what are we doing here?
Thank you.
I don't understand what, like, why don't we just buy a couple garbage removal trucks and hire eight guys? It's probably a lot cheaper. And then we could work a deal with the transfer station to take our weight. I mean, who's thinking?
Well, I think the trash trucks are probably about $1 million apiece. And yeah, we would have to, we would have to buy three of them. We'd have to hire as many guys as you say, and then we'll have forever cost, health insurance cost, and everything else associated with that. Towns did that in the past. They got away from it.
We have a DPW to maintain them.
Hold on, we're going to, one at a time, please. You all set? Just adjusting your microphone.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, sir, if you want to continue or any follow-up?
I just don't understand why we have to keep charging the person that's footing the bill for everybody. I look at some of these line items on the, the, you know, Article 8, 19,000 to upgrade the Wi-Fi at the police station. Who's doing the job?
We'll get to that.
Like, who's doing the job for 19,000? I use, upgrade gym equipment, 20 grand. Hold on. MS4 stormwater project, 225 grand. Who's doing that job?
We'll get to that article. We can't talk about that article.
Uncles, cousins? What's going on? Like, what's going on? I don't see the, the benefit. I just don't see it. I don't think you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Ms. Frainey, you have the microphone if you want to.
I'm shot. 12 Pla Street, Mary Jo Frainey. I just have a question. There's a difference between debt exclusion and an override, correct? We already override once for the trash and then something twice. Then, then something came up a few years after that for an override, which I formed a committee against the override. I hope you understand, when you vote an override, it doesn't go away. We're still paying for that first trash, that two and a half percent. That stays there forever. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frainey. And to be, and to be completely clear, what these, this warrant article is not proposing an override this year. Okay? Mr. Deon, name and address, please.
Yeah, Thomas Deon, 27 Mulberry Drive. You know, for about 40 years, we've had a townwide trash collection system that's been paid through property taxes. What I've heard today from one of the speakers is that they would like to continue that. I would like to continue the trash system as we have it. I think it's been efficient, efficient. I think it was implemented in its current form from 2011 with the trash barrels that are large, larger than any other town. And I think the haulers do a good job collecting it. I also feel that it requires virtually no overhead. It doesn't have a lot of people that are involved that I think you'll need if you go to a pay-as-you-throw to bill. If people don't pay, are you going to shut them off? Are you going to basically put a lien on their property? So I think, I disagree with the former speaker. I think the town has done a good job, basically, in a lot of areas, but on this and going through the other option that we have. But I would like to move the question and pass over Article 6, is it? And we have a year to come back next year, during the year, and decide whether to continue paying it with property taxes, which would require some sort of a, an override. And if people don't want to do that, then I think they've got, you people have the, the formula in place to go to as a, a user, a user fee program.
Thank you, Mr. Deon. Mr. Deon's making a motion to pass over the article, which is to object to the article, but the motion on the floor is to approve the article. So we stick with the positive motion always. You don't have to vote for yes, but we can, you can vote no when the time comes. You also made a motion, or you mentioned to move the question, which would be to stop debate and let's get to the vote. But it, just as courtesy, there are two gentlemen waiting in line. When those two gentlemen are done, we will move to a vote. So the next gentleman, please state your name and address.
Robert Manning, 34 Orange Street. I'd just like to address the free cash piece of this. If I understand correctly, we said we have about $4, $4 million in free cash right now. So if I understand the budget line items that I'm looking at today, we're attacking free cash in multiple places on this budget line item for this year. Looking at what we are looking at going forward with the federal government potential cuts next year, we may need to bite into free cash again. That, I was just concerned with the amount of free cash being utilized in this line item budgets, taking that down to a point where if we find ourselves shot next year, we're going to be in more difficulty than we are this year. So my only, my only question to you and to the Finance Board is, when addressing free cash to apply to pay for funding of line items on the line item budget, the consideration of future availability of that free cash, I, I know you're taking that into consideration when you do it.
Absolutely.
But I, I have, this year amongst any other year, given where we are in the situation in the, in the state and in the federal government, I have high concerns with what the potential loss to income coming into this town going forward in the next two years could potentially be, based on what I've seen so far going on in the government. So I just want to simply make a statement about the free cash issue and how many different line items are being utilized this year already and the potential of that not being available in the future as much as we like to have it.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone like to respond to that or comment?
We, we share your concerns.
Mr. Sala, Mr. Lambeau, the board, you good?
Okay.
Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Nick Whitney, 70 Loganberry. One of the things just for to get clarity on, in the proposed model, would we get a quarterly bill as we do for sewer and water today for those services? And I guess the second part of the question is, would the town absorb that processing fee with current staff?
Yes, and yes.
Okay. And the second part is, for clarity, it's, would be, I guess, fiscal year, July 26 through 27, where the $400 would be in place?
So
And then that's an, that's, I'm assuming that's an estimate at this point?
It, it is an estimate. It's, and the 400 would be, do we have the, we don't have the schedule. I think you have it in your, your handouts if you look at them. It essentially would be this, this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, Ju-, July 1st, '25 to '26, would be no cost, no fee. '26 to '27 would be 25%, then 50%, then 75%, then 100%. So the 400, which again is an estimate, would be five years down the road.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Moderator recognizes Town Manager Lambeau, I believe. Yep?
I agree with him.
He agrees, okay. Thank you. Okay, and nothing else to be said on the matter. Looking at the Board of Selectmen, you guys good? Okay, so we're good, I'm sorry. Moderator recognizes Barbara Ray, member of the Finance Committee in Abington. And then we'll move to a vote.
I appreciate all of the healthy debate over the question. And all of the questions that everyone asked were things that we asked as we went through the process of looking at this in the budget. And I just want to be sure that, like Mary Jo Frainey had said, if we were to do an override, we just continue to kick the can down the road. So 35 years ago, we had an override so that we could afford to pay the trash. And then 17 years later, we had another override so that we could afford to pay the trash. And over the last five years, there's been a 56% increase in the cost for us to get rid of the trash. And we can't keep up with it. And I did not want to pay a trash bill because I'm making the same decisions that you make in your own home. But I also don't want to have to go out and hire a private hauler. And I don't want to lose the services that I receive in the town. We've looked at all of the budgets. There is no place that I can see that we're not running lean. We looked at every possible way to not have to have a trash bill because nobody on our board wanted to have a trash bill. And I agree with all of the sentiments about the equity. Someone that is 70 years old, 65 years old, living alone, should not be paying the same cost that I'm paying with three adult children and a lot more trash. And that all makes sense. So I think what's on the warrant right now is to just establish this fund. We're trying to be fiscally responsible and plan. We're trying to not be in a situation where, oh my gosh, we've seen this coming and we just keep kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road. We're trying to establish the fund to be able to put the money into and cover the trash. We still need to have a whole lot more conversation about all of the other aspects of the trash. The fairness to, like, someone had brought up someone that's on low income. How are, this, this will make or break them. Someone that is living alone, someone that has a family of 10, making it equitable, but still keeping the same service that we want to receive as residents. And we need the input. Do the residents want to go out and buy bags? Is that feasible for everyone? Or do the residents want to have their trash picked up more the way that it is being done right now? I do hear a lot of people complain to me about the current monitoring of the trash where, you know, you can't have the lid open, or they put a ticket on you. And the reason is because it's so expensive, the more trash there is, our bill keeps going up. When I first started on the Finance Committee a while back, it was cheaper to, significantly cheaper to dispose of our recycle because it was a commodity and other places wanted it. So if you were paying, I'm going to use small numbers, just, and these are not accurate, if you were paying $50 to get rid of trash, you were paying maybe $15 to get rid of recycle. So we pushed you all to recycle. And now nobody wants our recycle. And so you're paying $50 for trash and you're paying $49 to get rid of recycle. And it keeps going up. We have no other options, but we do need to make it fair to everyone. But this article is just to establish the fund so that we are responsible, that we plan ahead, that we're not in a situation where all of a sudden we're scrambling and everyone's looking for an override. We can't afford to do that. The person that can't afford to get, pay the, the trash bill that's low income certainly can't afford an override. The person that's 70 years old and on a fixed income and only has one bag of trash every three weeks cannot afford an override. We have to plan We have to plan ahead. We have to plan appropriately. This is a way to do that. I don't like the idea. I just, if someone has a better idea that's not going to cut your police, cut your teachers, cut your DPW, and cut your fire department, I would love to hear that. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Okay, the question comes on Article 6, and the Finance, no, Alex, we're going to move the question. We're moving on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I already said we're moving along. We've got a lot of things to take on tonight. Article 6, the Finance Committee's motion is to approve Article 6 to establish the enterprise fund and to appropriate 1.2 million from free cash to pay for the costs of the trash removal for all of the next fiscal year. If you are in favor of setting up the fund and transferring the free cash of 1.25 million to pay for the trash via the fund now with the annual fee that would move forward, you will answer my call by saying aye. If you're opposed, you would say no. So all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 6 as presented and to fund it with free cash, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, good job. This is our town legislature. You are all legislators, and this is why we meet every year, at least once a year. What we're going to do now, we have a couple of ways to kind of confirm the vote. You were given, oh, I lost my card. There it is. You were given a card. I'm going to see if I can visualize it a little bit better. This is a majority vote. If you are in favor of Article 6, I want you to hold the blue card towards me. So if you are in favor, please raise your blue card towards me. Thank you. You can put your blue cards down. If you are opposed, please raise your red card. This is really close. So what we do now, in this circumstance, we have a standing count. So I have already appropriated tellers that are going to help me count. Theresa Mays is going to count all of the voters that are up in the far right. Anybody sitting in the middle who wants to be voting on this article, I need you to get Terri's attention. She's in the jacket at the bottom of the stairs. All those who are voting on this side, Liz, you're counting that side. Mr. Nagel is going to count the middle section. Mr. Wakeland is going to count this right section in front of me. Mr. Nagel, you're going to count this middle section and the members of the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Stark, you're going to count your section and the members of the Finance Committee. So if you are in favor of approving Article 6, I ask you, please stand and remain standing until I ask you to sit. If you are in favor, please stand and remain standing while we count. Mr. Wakeland?
24.
24. Ms. Mays?
13.
13, 1-3. Mr. Nagel?
45.
Sorry?
45.
45. And Ms. Stark?
42.
42? Thank you. If you are opposed to Article 6, I ask you, please stand and remain standing. Okay, thank you. Please, please sit. Sorry, Mr. Wakeland's 22. Ms. Mays?
60.
6-0.
Ms. Stark.
Mr. Nagel?
33.
33. Ms. Stark?
26.
26. I know some of you can probably add faster than me, but just please be patient. The amount of voters who signified by saying aye to approve is 124. All those who signify by saying no is 141. Article 6 is not passed as proposed. We move on to Article 7. Thank you. Article 7 is the operating budget of the town for the next fiscal year, which, as we mentioned, starts on July 1st of 2025 and takes us to July, sorry, to June 30th of 2026. Mr. Sala.
There's a lot to read, so settle in.
Yes, let me explain that. Mr. Sala has to read a rather lengthy motion, which will be displayed as we go. One of his duties is to recite the funding sources for the entire budget. So Matt, sorry, Matt is required to read it into the record. Please, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the total sum of $71,847,803 to defray general fund salaries and expenses of the town for FY 2026, as set forth in the detailed budget under the column entitled "FY 2026: Finance Committee Recommended." And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $68,575,628 and transfer the total sum of $3,272,175 as follows. Fund 450 Cable Access Enterprise Indirect Costs $8,022. Fund 460 Gulf Enterprise Indirect Costs $100,175. Fund 470 Sewer Enterprise Indirect Costs $693,616. Fund 490 Water Enterprise Indirect Costs $589,396. Free Cash $1,880,966. And further, that the town approve the following special revenue and enterprise funds for the fiscal year 2026 budgets, all set forth at the end of the detailed budget. Appropriate from conservation receipts the total sum of $5,000 to defray the conservation receipts reserved expense for FY 2026, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from Cable Access Enterprise the total sum of $298,022 to defray the Cable Access Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for FY 2026, with the sum of $8,022 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Cable Access Enterprise Fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from Gulf Enterprise receipts the total sum of $545,829 to defray the Gulf Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for FY 2026, with the sum of $100,175 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Gulf Enterprise Fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from Sewer Enterprise receipts the total sum of $3,036,913 to defray the Sewer Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for FY 2026, with the sum of $693,616 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from Water Enterprise receipts the total sum of $3,733,517 to defray the Water Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for FY 2026, with the sum of $589,396 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. And further, that the town appropriate an additional sum of $1,200,000 for waste collection expenses and transfer $1,200,000 from free cash to fund this additional amount.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. That is the motion for the approval of the operating budget in Article 7, and we'll be looking at the three-page handouts attached at the end of your warrant. Rather long motion, but it specifically allocates all of the money that will be needed to pay for the operating budget for the town. What we typically do is look at each page of the budget first, and after we're done reviewing, if there's any questions, we'll go back and take one vote to approve the budget as presented or if there's any amendments. So are there any questions on the first page of the budget, which starts at the top with the line that says Town Meeting Salaries, and then ends at the bottom with the words Total Education? If not, we can move to Page 2. Page 2, beginning up top with Highway Salaries line item, and at the bottom with the total miscellaneous total. Are there any questions for the approval of Page 2? Mr. Malika, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Paul Malika, 152 Presidential Drive. A quick question. In terms of free cash, we're starting with X. We're going to use so much in this budget, and how much we ending up with?
I don't know yet. We haven't voted.
Trying to get you a number.
Approximately $103,000 will be remaining.
Say it again? Approximately $103,000? $103.
So when we finish with the budget, we have $103,000 left in free cash?
Roughly, yes.
Scott, will that be the budget and the capital?
That, after everything?
After all of the articles from the warrant for tonight.
And that does not, just to be clear, that does not, we still have a stabilization fund that's available. Matt, if you explain what that is.
Yep. So over the years, we have, as Town Meeting, put money into our stabilization fund, commonly referred to as the rainy day fund. You will note on the next article that we are taking a little bit of money out of that. That fund has, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, that fund has approximately, right now, $3.4 million in it.
$3.6.
$3.6, and we're using about 400?
Yes, roughly 400.
$1,000 out of it in...
Four capital.
Four capital in the next item. So the rainy day fund, whether or not anything passes in this budget, the rainy day fund will still have over $3 million in it.
And again, that's called your stabilization fund, which every town has. Yes, ma'am?
Martha Kraft, 175 Damon Road, still Abington. Waste collection expense, which is department number 4, 4,300. I believe that you changed that figure. You added the 1.2 million. I think it was maybe the last thing that you said.
The last thing that I read as part of the motion was because the previous article did not pass.
So will it be the 1.2 plus the 263,000?
Yes.
Let's get an exact figure on that.
Yes, that's correct. So 1.463.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, and Scott already mentioned this, what was being separated out was the 263 is the town department's trash that the town removes. That was not being factored into what would have been charged to the citizens for trash removal had Article 6 passed.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address once again.
Catherine Salem, 22 Lantern Lane. I just would like an explanation of the retirement of debt lines, 7,100 and 7,500. I just wanted to know what they were.
Certainly. Mr. Andrew or Scott want to take? That's on the second page once again, about two-thirds of the way down.
So that's just debt that we're paying down. So things that are, we have road work or high school project, stuff like that.
Annual debt payments being budgeted for the next fiscal year. Good question. Any other questions? If not, we'll turn to Page 3. Are there any general specific questions on Page 3? Sir, Mr. Frainy. Mike Frainy, 726 Washington, I think?
726.
All right.
I'm kind of curious. I have a, for our attorney, I have the Division of Local Services, and much to my surprise, I was just introduced this the other day, and it lists Abington, all the overrides it's had, the ones that passed, the ones that didn't pass, and what the vote was. But in the last column, it says what it was for. And the two articles that I would question were both for rubbish stated. It seems funny to me that without a vote at Town Meeting, we can just disallow that both those funds to appoint a 1.2 million, were voted by the people in this town, a very healthy service, a very argument we had, debate back and forth on both of them. But can they do that? Without a vote at Town Meeting, I mean, can the Board of Selectmen just suggest that we could take 1.2 million out of our rubbish and put it into the operating budget? I mean, it seems funny to me that stated that the override was for trash collection, both of them.
Mr. Lambiace?
So that last article was defeated, and what we're asking to do here is just use free cash to balance the budget, and that's the line item that we're filling. But that we're not asking to do anything different?
Well, I thought Matt just mentioned to take 1.2 million.
Of free cash to balance that line item, but it's not part of...
Okay.
An enterprise, we're not looking to, that was defeated, we're not doing that.
Okay.
Finance Committee? So to, can I clarify? Just to clarify, had Article 6 passed, we would have taken 1.2 million from free cash and put it into a new fund for trash removal. That article did not pass, so what we are doing now in the budget is taking 1.2 million from free cash and putting it into the budget to cover waste removal.
Why couldn't we just leave the 1.2 million? Why did we have to take it from free cash?
We have to pay it from somewhere.
So that 1.2 million is already gone? It's already spent?
It's what we're spending for, it's what we're allocating for trash removal. That's what we're putting to the trash removal line in the budget so that we can spend on...
I guess I'm a little confused, Matt. I thought we had voted overrides. I thought we had 1.2 million on, in the warrant for rubbish, up until you just said...
So I, to, I, moderator, town manager, the town attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but past overrides are voted, and you can state what the override is voted for, but after the first year, that money goes into the general fund. It is not allocated to that item in perpetuity.
Curious.
Thank you, Mr. Frainy.
Typical government. Abracadabra. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Frainy. Sir?
Robert Manning, 34 Orange Street. Sorry, I'm just bringing up a line item for waste collections. I just want to make sure we're okay because we didn't pass Number 6. And so the line item budget was proposed for was 1.6, and we only had $263,000 for next year in the line item for the budget. Do you need more money in that line item?
The final motion was to transfer 1.2 million of free cash into that line item.
So that will subbid that?
And that will sub, yes. And that will be the 1.2 million that we're all looking for.
So as I mentioned, the Finance Committee's motion has to detail all the different funding and revenue sources that, when pooled together, is enough money to fund the entire budget. So Matt ran through, and you saw the list of all the different sources of revenue, whether it's tax money, sewer revenue, water revenue, free cash that's available for us to invest in the budget, things like that. And that's what we're doing now. So approval of this budget would basically keep level services in the town, correct me if I'm wrong, and also keep your trash service as it is right now for the next fiscal year.
And to Bob's point, if Article 6 had passed and we used 1.2 million there, we would not have wanted 1.6 million in the trash item line in the budget so that we would essentially have it in two places and be spending extra money.
Paying for trash once.
Or allocating.
Yes, sir.
Aaron Christian, 222 High Street. We'll bring up the line item again. We're adding 1.2 million, which would bring it to, what is it, 1.4 effectively? That's $100,000 less than we had last year. Is the reason why it's going down if the cost is rising?
We actually, I think our actual on that was closer to 1.4, right? We had estimated it. Again, there's an area where you end up with free cash. If you estimate it too high, and that difference turns into free cash. We try to estimate it a bit higher on sometimes. We're trying to be more conservative this year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Okay, any other questions on any of the line items in the budget? If not, we'll take one motion to approve. Yes, sir.
Lewis and Proto, 25 Coleman. With last year's budget, was there any money that went into free cash? Was our budget last year over, and we had money go into free cash this year?
That's, so that money that... That's, so that money, that $4 million that we talked about this week, that was generated from last year's money that was...
All of last year, not just like capitalized for multiple years, that's...
No, no, that's just from one year.
Just last year. We were over by four.
Between, between revenue that was more than what we expected, and savings on expenses and other line items.
Just want to clarify, we saved $4 million in the budget, which you guys work, which is good. Just got to find a way to do it again, that's all.
Yeah, and it's something, I mean, typically, we get it, free cash, we have free cash every year. Usually, we try to use it for one, one time items, we usually use it just for our capital plan, and then some warrant articles. This year, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, there are a couple of opportunities where we've had to use the free cash this year to balance the budget. This is one of them. We don't like to do that, but that's where we're at.
Anyone who has watched the Finance Committee meetings, or come to the Finance Committee meetings, has heard us say in the last month or so, that this is not an ideal year, and it's not ideal sources for the funding of the budget. We would not want to use free cash for, for the budget, we would not want to use stabilization funds for the capital plan, but what we, what we have done is made sure that we get through this year with level services, without having to either go for an override, or have layoffs. So, while we, we don't think this is ideal, it's where we are, and it's better than where most of the towns around us are.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. And just for the record, free cash is not a term that the town of Abington came up with, it's Massachusetts Department of Revenue calls it that, so it's something we're uncomfortable saying and using, but that is the term, Department of Revenue requirements. So, with all that being said, we're going to take a vote on approving the budget in accordance with the motion mentioned by the Finance Committee, or read by the Finance Committee. Matt, can you repeat that motion? Oh, boy. So, I'm going to ask for all those in favor of the budget, and all those opposed. So, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to approve the operating budget with the sources that were listed by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
The ayes pass. And I do want to note that our State Representative Allison Elmina Sullivan is here. I'm glad your baby's feeling better. Thank you for your attending. Moving on to Article Eight, the funding of the capital plan, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds, borrow, lease, purchase, or otherwise provided for following capital items. They're shown there in the chart in your, in your warrant. Mr. Sala with the motion.
This one is not as long, but it's also not short, so. The Finance Committee moves that the town approve the capital plan as printed in the warrant, with an effective date of April 7, 2025, and to meet said appropriations, transfer the total sum of $2,343,321.99 as follows. Free cash, $571,331. Stabilization fund, $433,605. Water retained earnings, $992,500. Golf retained earnings, $109,000. Annual town meeting, May 20, May of 2021, Article 13, zero Bedford Street land purchase, Annual town meeting, April 2023, Article Five, replace fence at Island Grove, $50,000. Annual town meeting, April 2023, Article Five, replace truck bed, $1,000. Annual town meeting, April 2023, Article Five, boom mower attachment, $5,305. Annual town meeting, May of 2019, Article Three, fuel station upgrades, $13,573. Annual town meeting, April 2022, Article Ten, waste oil furnace, $4,200. Annual town meeting, April 2023, Article Five, replace F-350, $3,932.40. Annual town meeting, April 2024, Article Six, DPW front end loader, $15,000. Annual town meeting, April 2024, Article Six, DPW road improvements, $71,188.9. And to further authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow the amount specified in the warrant for landfill closure engineering expenses, and MS for stormwater project expenses, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute all documents necessary to further the purposes of this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Well done. Is there anything to be heard for discussion on Article Eight regarding the capital plan? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, first of all, I couldn't follow you at all on where you were bringing it from.
I could barely follow me, so...
But on page four, the very last item, landfill closure engineering expense, which is under the town management request, number eight, for...
$250,000.
Yes. What, can you explain that, please?
Mr. Lambiace?
Yeah, so, we've been working on this for several years now. At some point in the past, the landfill was closed, DEP said, you've closed your landfill now, we want you to cap it. DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection from the state, said it's time to cap your landfill. The town didn't do it, and, and I know maybe about five years ago, I had reached out to the engineer, who is in charge of monitoring it for us, and said, listen, we need to get this project back up, can you check with DEP and start the permitting process? Phase one of that permitting process got us up to, took about a year and a half or so, and that's where we're at now. We can go in there and design the actual closure, get final approval from DEP, and then we can cap the landfill.
For those who are not aware, that's located on Groveland Street, kind of near Cape Cod Lumber, if you're familiar with that building is.
Is that where I bring my, my trees? Not my trees, you can't bring trees.
Your compost, your leaves.
Mattresses.
So, is that going to be closed, and we're not going to be able to use it anymore?
No, actually, the, the plan does call for sort of an enhanced program there when it's done. So, what we're hoping to do, as part of our, you know, attempt to reduce tonnage and find better options for recycling, is to expand somewhat, and whatever DEP will allow us to do at the end, we'll still be able to bring compostable materials, maybe we can have some sort of a container there from enhanced composting, more collection of extra cardboard during the holidays. We do, this has a recycling program for electronics that you're on already, so we do expect to continue that and actually improve upon it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to be heard on Article Eight? If not, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, as written by, as read by Mr. Sala, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Current article nine, the community preservation budget, to see if the town will vote to adopt the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2026, and their proposals are shown and outlined in the chart on page five of your warrant. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Finance Committee moves approval of the article, is there anything to be heard on Article Nine? If not, we'll move to a vote on Article Nine, all those in favor of approving, are you wanting? Who's talking? Where am I? Up there? There we go.
Over here as well.
Where's that?
Rich DeGrawley, 345 Ann Circle. What is this, $350,000 for the playgrounds? Can someone explain that? Arnold Park?
Arnold Park revitalization.
Where's that money coming from? Does that come out of our budget, or...
So, this, I, I believe we have the representative from the, from the Community Preservation Committee coming, but just quickly, all of the money in this article comes from the Community Preservation Fund, which is a separate fund that we, as a town, approved to pay as, I believe it's one and a, 1.5% of your taxes, that the state has a portion that they match each year, that is dedicated solely to community preservation, and there's four or five different areas that, that they specify that you have to spend money towards.
It just seems like that's a lot of money, and we, you know, we talk about not having enough money in the town.
Yeah, this is, this is...
This is, this is extreme, when you think about it.
The community preservation funds can only be spent for community preservation.
Cannot be used to balance other budgets.
And so, we've already given money to this?
Yes.
We actually have this amount of money sitting in an account?
Yes.
Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, Rachel Collins.
All right, Rachel Collins, 74 Orange Street. So, with the, in 2016, at town meeting, Abington adopted the Community Preservation Act, so 1.5% goes into a fund that can only be used for very specific reasons. You have a committee in town, made up of people from park and rec, from the planning board, from conservation, I'm forgetting groups housing, and then some members at large, and groups can bring community ideas for capital improvements to the committee, and those funds specifically are used in those things. So, can be used for housing, for recreation, open space, it can be used for historical, I'm forgetting something. So, those can only be used for those things. So, one of the, the proposals that was brought to us was for revitalization at Arnold Park, for two street hockey courts, and to improve the playground that's there, that is in complete disrepair and has been for a very long time. So, this is really great, it's going to have some, it's going to fix up the playground, it's going to redo the basketball court that's currently there, as well as adding a street hockey court, and it will have lighting.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. This gentleman here would like to speak on the motion.
Thank you very much, Brian Woodford, 24 Harriet Road. So, I just also want to clarify that this isn't, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, taxpayer money, this is money that comes from all of the county sale of real estate. They charge each seller of real estate a portion of funds that goes into it, it's not out of taxpayer or town taxpayer money. Yeah, this, this is from people from other towns and sale of real estate.
So, Brian, Brian, it's, you're close.
Yeah.
Not quite. So, there is a 1.5% that does come from the taxes, but it's met by a matching grant from the state.
Thank you.
If you look at the hand, at the, the warrant, it does break down the local CPA revenue versus the state CPA revenue.
Okay.
The, the local is the amount that are, is paid by Abington residents, and in this case, it's just shy of half a million dollars.
And...
The state revenue, the state each year sets based on how many communities are participating in the program, and when they adopted it, and how much money comes in through the Registry of Deeds via specific funding sources, like specific things that people pay for through the Registry of Deeds. The state determines yearly what their percentage of matching funds is. I don't know offhand, I could probably do the math somewhat quickly, it's not...
Appreciate it, and those, like you said, those funds are already in there, but specifically with that amount of money that has been allocated to Arnold's Park, I'm speaking, you know, on behalf of the Abington High Hockey Program, as the Abington High Hockey Coach, it's been very difficult, ever since I've even played hockey in Abington, to fund a team, and that's because we don't have facilities. We have basketball courts, football fields, baseball fields, pickleball courts, but we've never had anything dedicated to hockey. And about five years ago, the police station, the Department of Public Works, and the Parks and Rec were kind enough to allow us to use the basketball courts at the police station to have a league, and things were going great there, but unfortunately, with the fire station coming in, and the new facilities up there, we need to find a new home. So, this isn't only going to provide the many, many youths of Abington with a home for street hockey, that can also be used for basketball, as it has always been, but now also multifunctional for street hockey. This is also going to bring business into the area of town that needs business on Wednesday nights, a night that typically, there are not a lot of people in North Abington eating, drinking, you know, purchasing things within town, that this is going to bring a revitalization to the, that area, while also serving the youth of Abington, giving young hockey players a chance to play hockey, something that they've never had in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Woodford. Mr. DeGrawley, have any other follow-up?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is Arnold Park, the baseball field going to be done too? Or are they taking away the baseball field?
We, the baseball field will still be there, and it has had improvements over the years, and will continue to improve that as funds are available. There have been funds in previous years, specifically for the baseball fields in town.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Frainy, do you have a question?
I think it's a great idea for the kids at North, basically, there's not much there. My question is on the Island Grove snack shack. I was watching a cable show, and it was, I think it was, who was in charge of the recreation park of the Island Grove, that the enrollment was down? Why are we doing, investing $90,000 for our shacks?
So, that is a really great question. As it is right now, the snack shack is not really appropriate, we really need to have upgraded wiring, upgraded, we need to be able to have washing facilities, and that's really not something that is in there at this point, and in order to make that happen, with the engineering involved and things like that, we, that's just, that's what the money comes back, as everything is so expensive, we, I promise you, we wish that it was much cheaper, that is the cost.
Did you put it off a bit to get, try to get?
Oh, yeah. This is, this is actually the second time that this has come up on the CPA budget, and the prices, everything's just gone up, and the engineering that's involved. So, again, I, I wish that things didn't cost as much, I wish playgrounds weren't as expensive as they are, and everything has its life cycle, and this is what's due. When we talk about the actual, you mentioned the enrollments going down, as that is a fact, the amount of children that are using the camp has skyrocketed, where we're having to cut it off. Anyone who's tried to get in, their kids into camp, it closes so quickly. And so, again, upgrading, upgrading this facility is also helping the camp.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Frainy. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Anything else to be heard on Article Nine, Community Preservation Budget? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article Ten, payment of sick leave buyback, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $50,000 to pay for sick leave, sick leave buyback for two retiring water department employees, with a like amount to be funded by the town of Rockland. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented, and to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund this article.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve with the $50,000 from Water Enterprise Fund. Anything to be heard on Article Ten? If not, all those in favor of Article Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Article Eleven, FY23 opioid settlement, a housekeeping article to see if, well, you can make the motion, Matt?
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented, and that the sum of $106,161.85 be transferred from free, free cash to fund this article.
Are any questions on Article Eleven? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Article Twelve, Hillside Cemetery, Finance Committee's motion is?
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article, and to transfer the sum of $1,000 from free cash to fund this article.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the article and transfer $1,000 from free cash. All those in favor of Article Twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article Thirteen, I am going to step down as moderator, because I was involved in negotiating this gift to the town, and Mr. Donovan will step in and be moderator for Article Thirteen.
Article Thirteen, relating to the acceptance of a gift to the town of 20 plus or minus acres of land from the Trufant family, Chair recognizes Chairman of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant, and to transfer the sum of $32,600 from Golf Course Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund this article.
Question comes in the motion, is there anything to be said? Mr. Wakeland? Steve Wakeland, Chairman of Strawberry Valley Golf.
Forty-seven Buckwood Land, I get to say that. I want to take this opportunity to let you know, we've been working several years to get this through. Mr. Trufant came to the committee, said he had some great land that abuts third and fourth hole. We're very pleased that, you know, he, he came forward, and it was the Trufants back in 86 that, that had given us the 50 acres for the golf course. So, oh, actually, that's great. So, you'll see where the land's being donated. What we plan to do is to do some renovations to some of the holes, and try to make the course a better course, you know, making some of the holes for the golfers, making some of the holes longer, and just, you know, more, more experienced golfers will be coming up, and, you know, be making more money up there, and we, we've been doing great over the last five or six years. And we, we've been doing great over the last five or six years. I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Trufant, who happens to be here tonight. Mr. Trufant, on behalf of the Town of Abington and Strawberry Valley Golf Committee, we'd like to extend our benef- uh, our heartfelt thanks and deepest appreciation for your incredible generosity in donating 20 acres of land to the town and golf course. Your selfless contribution will have an immense impact on our community, community and will benefit generations to come. Addition of this land to Strawberry Valley is a tremendous gift, providing both recreational opportunities and a lasting legacy for, for all those who enjoy the course. We are truly grateful for your commitment to enhancing our town and the quality of life for its residents. Would also like to express our gratitude to the Trufant family for everything that they have done for the town over the years. Um, they've supported and had a vision that help, uh, have played a vital role in making Abington a better place for all. A special thank goes to Frank Lane, a valued member of the Strawberry Valley Golf Committee, for his dedication and efforts in seeing this project through completion. Frank's hard work and commitment were instrumental in bringing this project to fruition. Once again, thank you, Mr. Trufant, the Trufant family, for your unwavering support and generosity. The Town of Abington is forever grateful.
Okay, question comes on Article 13, anything further to be said? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote. All will try it first on a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 13, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Chair declares unanimous.
Article 14 is the demolition of the building at 22 Bedford Street, which is actually on part of the Strawberry Valley Golf Course. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant and to transfer the sum of $125,000 from Golf Course Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund this article.
Mr. Sala makes a motion to approve the article with the 125,000 that come from the golf course's enterprise fund. Anything to be heard on Article 14? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Article 14 passes. Article 15, Hancock Street, Hancock Chestnut Street Intersection Improvement Project. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 15. Is there anything to be said? There's a descrip- or a picture showing it's going to be a roundabout at the intersection of Hancock and Chestnut Street, much like the one that's at the opposite end of Chestnut Street at North Quincy Street.
Whoops.
Yes, Ms.?
I'm breaking this thing. Wait a minute.
You can hold it, but go ahead.
There we go. I just want to say, are you serious? You're gonna put another rotary in this place? I mean, can't you have stop signs or, or, I suppose the residents around there don't want working lights, but that rotary that's down the road further is awful. You can never get into it, I'm supr- you know, without taking your life in your hands. I, I don't understand why you put a, a rotary there instead of just dealing with the traffic in some other way. The four-way stops, people know about four-way stops. Why do you have to have a rotary?
Moderator recognizes Mr. Sala.
So this is, this is an, uh, two things. First, this is an intersection that ha- I have, uh, driven through many times but has been talked about since I first moved to town. Uh, the safety level of the intersection is not good. Um, but we have talked repeatedly over the years as the Finance Committee with, uh, John Stone, our DPW chief. He has been working with the state and their engineers on possibilities for this and this is what the state both recommended and approved pa- uh, funds for. Uh, the, the funding for this is coming primarily from the state, all from the state, sorry. Um, so essentially, we're, we're getting the, the solution to this and for people who know the intersection, there's a very steep grade on that. Part of this process is regrading the, the intersection so that it is far more level and far safer.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Mr. Lambeau, do you want to add anything or you're good?
No, just that, you know, this is something that's already been in the works, been approved. This article is specifically just to authorize in the selectmen to go through the next step, which is the taking of the land, which is negotiated with, the landowners are all aware of this, this is something that they've met with on many occasions with Mass DOT to discuss this. It's just, really at this point, it's just a formality.
Thank you.
And, and as a quick note on that, one of, one of the abutters and landowners is a member of the Finance Committee, so it's been a, it, there's been a lot of thought gone into this, so...
Who abstained from the votes?
Yes.
All right, just for the record, uh, Mr. Nagel, if you could help fix the microphone over here with this gentleman is next up, whenever you're comfortable, use that microphone.
I think we're good. Justin Chafe, 54 Hancock Street. So I just recently moved into town at the beginning of the year. I love Abington, I love the town, I hope to get more involved in local politics soon. I know from my own firsthand experience, having to drive through this intersection every day back and forth to get to work, I honestly wish this rotary project would be coming sooner. This intersection, it's a nightmare each way. It's like other people have said, the sightlines are impossible. The traffic on Chestnut Street backs up to both ends because you have to like, almost take life into your own hands to try to get across the intersection if you go on Chestnut Street. So I would just urge everybody to vote in favor of this because this is long overdue in my opinion.
Thank you very much. Next gentleman, if you, please state your name and address.
Jerry Slack, 1121 Bedford Street. I think it's not a bad idea, but I also think we need a no left-hand turn on 139 onto Hancock Street. I drive that every day and people take that way as a shortcut because of the traffic going to that intersection.
Which intersection are you talking about, Mrs. Slack?
The Hancock and Chestnut.
This same one?
This same one.
Okay.
If you go up 139 further, it'll take a left by the Lobsteban, that is treacherous.
And just for the record, there are additional improvements at Route, at Randolph Street and Chestnut, coming down the pipeline through the Mass Department of Highway, whatever they call it now with their engineers. This is the first one and then they'll be doing the intersection at Chestnut Street and Randolph Street or Route 139. Thank you.
And the other thing is if the state could get the drivers' education people to teach people how to drive, a lot of these, a lot of these accidents would not happen.
Thank you. And, and for the record, the, the work that will be done on Randolph Street and Chestnut Street is not a turn, it's not a rotary. It's, it'd be traffic lights at that intersection. Ms. Mays.
Uh, Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street, and I live on that corner that we were just talking about. I have heartburn with this because this is eminent domain. Uh, that is not the way we should go. People should not lose their land for this. Lights will work.
This is Hancock and Chestnut. I know you live on the corner of Hancock and Randolph.
Right. I'm talking about the intersection where the corner store is. So all these corners are gonna lose their land because we're not gonna put in lights. I think if we put in lights, people don't need to lose their land.
Moderator recognizes the, the Director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. John Stone.
Terry, the, uh, intersection didn't meet the warrants for a set of traffic signals. It met the warrants for a roundabout.
That's just not right. I'd, I'd, I'd want someone to look, no disrespect, you know, I think highly of you.
This will be a lot safer.
But it's taken away people's land.
N- not a lot.
To the people that you're taking away from, it's a lot.
So, yeah, that, that compensated for it. It'll, it'll be a negotiation process. Um, this will be a lot safer than what's...
If we're gonna grade it anyway, the lights would work. I mean, I could see the lights not working.
We can't.
I appreciate you.
I appreciate you too.
All right. Thank you, John, and thank you. Terry, this gentleman, do you have something to add?
Yeah, just want to, Lewis and Pro, 25 Coleman. I don't know how to read that. I know there's a rotary. Um, my concern is with Woodsdale. So if kids need to cross that street, how do they?
It'll be a lot easier when the...
So there's no, there's no crosscar, there's no like blinking light to slow down, there's no right-of-way for kids, like what?
Right now, there's no pedestrian accommodations, but there will be.
I'm hoping that's improved. So what, what's improved? I just, I just don't know how to read that.
There will be, as you can see there, there'll be, um, medians in the middle of the road. So when people are walking through the intersections, in the crosswalk, there'll be a pedestrian island in the middle of the intersection so they don't have to worry about crossing the whole 40 feet at once.
So people are gonna stop their rotary for crossing passengers, that's what you're expecting?
Yes.
Everyone stops for pedestrians in crosswalks, right, people? Come on now, we all do.
The sightlines are gonna be a lot better, it'll be a lot safer, trust me.
Thank you. Want to recognize Mr. Murphy?
Chris Murphy, 200 Chestnut Street. I am an abutter. Um, I'm on one of those corners, I don't want a light there. Um, the road, we had, I don't know how many meetings, three meetings with the DPW and the state, maybe more. Um, they went through it with all of us. Uh, we looked at the, that map, we fully understand everything on there. Um, no, but, um, and...
And it's free.
And it's free, yes. But, um, the rotary was the best option, in, in our opinion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Mrs. Franny.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
The other thing I'm upset at is you just did Hancock Street. You're gonna have to do something with that hill coming down, which means you're gonna be digging it up. Why do we always go backwards in this town?
We didn't, Mary Jo.
You didn't?
We didn't pave that section because we knew this was coming up.
Oh, okay.
We didn't pave that particular section of Hancock because we knew this was coming.
Okay. Because it seems like sometimes we go backwards instead of thinking a few years ago.
We, we try to do it the right way.
When you open up a street.
Yeah, no, no.
You come in front of the board as...
Thank you, both of you. Okay, great. All right. All right.
Mike.
You know, Mr. Donovan, could you, when you were on the board, I think, even before you, when you opened up a street, it would come in front of the board? So once that street's open and the work is done, then you'd, you'd never dig it up again.
Five years.
Five years.
Yep.
Now we go backwards.
No.
No, I think it was stated that this...
Well, I like the idea of the rotary, that's fantastic. I'm psyched about that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Sala had something to say there, Mrs. Franny?
One, one quick clarify, clarification to Ms. Mays' comment about lights versus, um, intersection. That is the state's determination and decision.
That's right.
That was not something that we had a say in. The state evaluated it and said that this is the option that they, that is allowed.
All right, Mr. Franny. Mike Franny, 726 Washington Street. Having gone through a couple of the hearings with the state engineer, he went over every aspect of this, including the patience that people have when they're sitting at a traffic light and, and stuff like that. Now, tow and companies in the Town of Abington has made a living off of that intersection. It's a very, very dangerous intersection, you can't see around the bend. This idea, respectfully to people who spoke against it, is a great idea. I did a lot of traveling when I was working and all the bad intersections, one by one, they were taken over by these, uh, roundabouts. And I've yet to see an accident at the roundabout. You do have to know how to drive, but like the engineer said, if you do have an accident there, it's gonna be minor. It's not two cars going full speed, which is true. Both cars slow down. So I would strongly urge the members of this town meeting to approve this and go forward. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. All right, approval of Article 15 will require a two-thirds or unanimous vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 15 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's uni- okay, it's more than two-thirds. Moderator declares that two-thirds has passed. We move on to Article 16, the South Shore Vocational Technical High School Agreement Amendment. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Want to explain this quick?
Uh, this is, this article, we would have voted on at the special town meeting in the fall that we did not get a quorum for, so we did, could not vote for it there. It is, um, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, this was to amend the agreement for the inclusion of...
That one we did at a prior town meeting, but the most recent one was as, as most of you are aware, we, um, recently approved a building project for the regional school and what this did, um, it amended the way that the, the, um, capital costs would be allocated to the schools. Had we, had it not been amended, um, it would have been whatever you, whatever town's share was at the time of the borrowing, we would have been stuck with that share right through till the end of the borrowing, which would likely be 30 years. Um, what this did was amended so every four or five years, there's a look back and then you'll be adjusted on what your percentage of enrollment was at the school. This did get passed by the other communities that are members of the school, however, I think it's, you know, we had the special, uh, to try and make sure that we were on record for wanting it to be amended and I think we should be still on record for agreeing with the amendment. It's just to our benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Lambeau. Anything else to be heard on Article 16 and the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 16 as presented? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 17, Establishment of Revolving Fund for EV Charging Station Management. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve and it is described, uh, under the article, under the town manager's comment. Anything to be said or heard on Article 17? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It should, it, it passes, majority vote passes. Article 18, the False Alarm Bylaw, and you can see it's printed in your bylaw, this would be a new bylaw in the general bylaws, we call it, of the town. Um, it's sponsored by the Chief of Police and the Finance Committee's motion is?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article, to approve and enact this new bylaw. Anything to be heard or any questions on Article 18? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 18 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Thank you. Article 19, town meeting quorum bylaw. Let's see if the town will change the quorum for annual town meeting, or for town meetings from 150 to 75 registered voters. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Anything to be heard on Article 19? If not, all those in favor of... Sean. Whoop, I'm sorry, Ms. Mays.
Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street. I objected last time when we dropped it to 150 because I believe we need to have representation from the town and dropping it from to 75 is, I won't say it. Um, I, I strongly, I'm against this article. We need to have people show up and represent and if we're not required to, we won't and we'll be, we'll be ruled by 75.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Malika. Mr. Malika has the floor.
Paul Malika, 152 Presidential Drive. The, um, many towns around us, um, probably like 20 years ago, 15, 20 years ago, I brought to committee, uh, town meeting, a proposal to drop the, uh, the quorum. Um, and the reason was that, uh, the town couldn't get its business done if we didn't have enough people show up for town meeting. The research that I did 15, 20 years ago for the towns, a lot of towns already have it in place then and had it in place for a while, was by lowering the quorum, it forced people to come to town meeting and also to come on time. One person, the first time I, I, I brought it, we lost by one vote, second time we lost by 10. But the argument was that people who didn't want to do it was because, well, I don't want was because, well, I don't want to give up my right to make decisions as a town meeting member. When the reality is, if you don't come every time, you've given up your right. So, by lowering the quorum, it puts pressure on people to come, come on time, so the town can get its business done. And not to have a quorum for the town to conduct its business is like the ultimate insult in terms of a town body, that you can't get enough people to come to make decisions for the town. So, I'm totally for this and recommend that people vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Malika. This gentleman here in the baseball hat?
Yeah, Tim Chapin, 353 Center Ave. I was just wondering why we're doing this. We keep bringing this up since 2020. We've come in front of the Board of Selectmen multiple times looking to lower it. We've turned it down every time until this year. Now, it's 5-0 and recommended. But I'm not understanding the reason why. We have been no trouble making quorum around in these parts. I understand special town meeting last year, when we were scheduled on the week of Thanksgiving with three articles, didn't get a quorum. But that, that's not a quorum issue. That's a, that was a scheduling issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chapin. Mr. Sala.
I, I don't know who brought it this time, but I do believe it was because we didn't get a quorum for the special town meeting, which is the first time since I've been part of the Finance Committee that we have not gotten a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Manning.
Robert Manning, 34 Orange Street. 2040, I celebrated 30 years of being a resident of the town of Abington. I've been adamant about keeping the quorum at 150. If you just think about it, we're gonna approve a budget of $71 million. And that only requires 35, 37 people to show up in a quorum of 75 to pass the vote. So, anybody with special interests could show up with 37, 38 people and pass the vote. I'm against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Martha Kraft, 175 Damon Road. I'm opposed to this, this article. Right now, 150 people represents 1.27% of the voting population. And if you move it down to this, it's gonna be 0.63%. I'm not even sure that you need, you know, anyone to show up to get the 75. I really think you need to keep it at 150. Just make it sound like it's gonna be a little bit more exciting when you advertise. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Moderator, when we originally surveyed, when we were discussing this matter, we surveyed 15 towns closest to Abington and found that 13 of the towns had quorums of 100 or less. Of those 13 towns, seven had quorums of zero. East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Pembroke, Duxbury, Norwell, Situate, Hull, and Marshfield. All of the towns who have switched to a lower quorum or who have actually reported that their attendance numbers have increased. And specifically, the larger communities, Marshfield in particular, Duxbury, they start on time. The people that come have the ability to come here and start early, are not waiting around. And those communities have actually seen their attendance increase. Of those communities, not one of them has gone back to having a quorum. They maintained it at zero, and they've had, they've filled the house, basically. And the possible reasons, we can possibly, is the reliability of the town meeting will start on time, no waiting around and hoping that enough people will show up. Fear of a smaller group making decisions encourages more people actually to attend the town meetings, thus increasing attendance numbers. And parents with children know that the meeting will not be postponed for lack of a quorum, so it's worth it to pay a babysitter to come to town meeting. And lastly, what I want to say is this. Society has changed. We are having a heck of a problem trying to get people to serve on town committees, to volunteer their time. And we're having problems of people, getting enough people to come to town meeting. It's a sign of the times, unfortunately. But I can tell you, based on our research, that those communities who have done this, and they did it many years ago, have actually seen an increase. When we have the quorum, it gives people a false sense of security, and they stay home. Those are just the cold, hard facts of what, you know, has been, has been proven in the other communities. I hope the article to amend it to 75 prevails.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Franny.
Yes. I guess, I'm not really for this, and I'll explain why. If we're gonna go this, tonight was a perfect example. We made it overall tonight for our quorum. But as soon as we voted on the rubbish, did you notice how many exits were gone in the back? That all left? They came here for one thing, and that was against the rubbish. Now, we lower it to 75 people, and there's a major thing on to be voted on, whether it's school, police, fire, highway. They want something done. They're gonna have 75 people here in no time. And we're home. Maybe someone's sick, unable to come, or a child. But whatever, lowering it to 75, I would rather go with the representative of my district than to go to 75 people. I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Franny. Yes, if you could again state your name and address.
Beth Owens, 28 Pond Street. I think that with tonight, there was a lot of advertising, obviously, on social media, which I think did help get a lot of people here. I think in lowering it, we're lowering the standard for ourselves as a town. And I hardly think that changing a town, a selectmen's meeting that has to do with a lot of these important issues on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. from 7, or whatever the heck time it was scheduled to, to 5:00 p.m. last minute, like what happened just recently, I don't think that that's gonna actually help get a lot of people to be able to attend the selectmen's meetings. So, I know that's a separate issue, which obviously needs to be addressed. But changing a time to 5:00 p.m., when, I'm sorry, but most of these folks are probably working, isn't actually gonna give a good show of people coming to meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Anything else to be heard on Article 19? Someone, Mr. Franny?
Mike Franny, 726 Washington Street. There's no bad ideas. What I know, when I was moderator, you have the budget, and you have the town expenses on the first part of it. So, people come, especially if they're workers of the town, and they pass the budget. Well, you have seven or eight other articles left. Gets to be 10 o'clock, they leave. Try to get a quorum for the next meeting. You're not gonna do it. The people got the money in place. The schools are gonna stay open, whatever. I don't know, what is it for a continued town meeting or a canceled town meeting? Is it still 150?
Yeah, every meet, every meeting, every session.
Would it be possible to suggest that the annual town meeting, which is all our usual big items, stay at 150? And a postponed town meeting, or go to 75?
Not, you can't make that motion tonight?
Why not?
Because it's not within the scope of this article.
I know the moderator.
Sit down, Uncle Mike.
No, no, just, there's no bad ideas, and especially the people up there. We spent, I'd like to have back all the time I've spent calling friends and neighbors trying to get another 10 or 15 voters at the town hall. It is a problem. So, what do you have to do? I mean, if it goes tonight, fine. If it doesn't, what do you have to do to change it sort of 150 and then subsequent, even postpone? Because you and I know, one time, we had a hurricane in this town. Me, you, Glenn Lapointe, and-
Town clerk.
Town clerk. Were the only four people that showed up. We could have voted, if it was zero, we could have voted. All the money, go to rubbish.
For the record, the moderator doesn't vote unless it's a tie. Thank you. Anything else to be heard in this Article 19? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want a question on, if you've, if you changed this to 75, you have to have 75 bodies in here, not half of that, in order to make it a quorum.
75, what was it, bodies or what?
Correct.
A quorum is, when you say a quorum, you need that number of people. So, if it's 75, you need 75 bodies.
Registered voters.
If it's 150, then, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
And there's no maximum.
You can't bring the whole family and count them.
We have seating for 700. This is the minimum amount for me to legally start the meeting.
Yes.
75, 0.
So, people who say, oh, well, you know, you get three people, and if it's only four, then you've gotta, no. But it's, you've gotta have the 75 or the 150.
Right.
And I personally, again, will support the 150. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sala.
Quick, quick question and answer to that. I believe the person earlier referring to 37 people was saying if you had half of the 75 people, 37 people could make a decision on, on something. Because they would vote down the other half of the people. So, if you had just, like, so. If something needed to pass with a 50% vote, like 7, 37, 38 people could vote down the other 37 people that were there, if you had 75 people exactly. I think, I think that's what was being referred to.
No matter what the quorum, we always encourage to have the largest crowd possible. And sometimes there's items, there's articles that bring out the crowd. Sometimes it's not, and that's when we get worried that we can't get the town's business done. The proposals on the table, anything else to be heard on Article 19?
Just a quick point is that during, during COVID, when things finally opened back up, we did have a quorum of 75 at that time. When we were having distanced town meeting, we, we did have no problems meeting the quorum for those meetings, despite, despite the pandemic.
That article is actually, that law is actually still in effect, but we're not exercising that. The selectmen have to make that decision. So, we stay at the normal 150. During that health emergency, the state allowed towns to reduce the quorum during that, the period of COVID. And Mr. Franny's talking about the hurricane. That's another, that's another statute about emergencies, earthquakes, hurricanes, things like that. I'm not, I'm not gonna hold a town meeting with four people. Enough said. Are we ready to vote on Article 19? All right, what, Mr. Franny? This better be good.
Just, just real quick. If this doesn't pass and stays at 150-
Yes.
It would be my intention next year to have 150 for the annual, get rid of the town budget, and then 75 for any postponed.
So, everybody come back next year?
If, if this happens. I mean, I could live with whatever they do.
Yeah, if, if.
Much, I think more people would come if you weren't moderator, actually.
If I'm, if I'm not moderator, I'd be talking a lot more down there. You want me up here? Okay. All those, we're gonna take the vote on Article 19. If you're in favor of reducing it to number to 75, you're gonna say aye. If you're opposed, you're gonna say no. All those in favor of Article 19 and the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes heaven. Turning to Article 20, it will remain at 150. Turning to Article 20. Article 20 is a zoning bylaw regarding accessory dwelling units under a new state law that was enacted. This is a change of the zoning bylaw. Most zoning bylaw amendments require a two-thirds vote, but the state law also had specific language. It said for accessory dwelling unit bylaws, you're only required to have a majority vote on this specific article, Article 20. Moderator recognizes the chairman of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article and defers to the planning board to make the motion for this zoning article.
Moderator, whatever. Liz Shea, the town planner, is here.
Once again, they've saved the best for last. I'm gonna make this very quick. Last August, the state legislature adopted the Affordable Homes Act. And as part of that act, accessory dwelling units. What is an accessory dwelling unit? For everybody else, it's a granny pod you can put in your backyard. It's an in-law. You can finish your basement and rent it out. Any number of uses that you can find, that's what this is. So, this act for the ADUs was effective February 2nd. We have since that time had a group put together with zoning board members, planning board members, town council, the building department, the assessor's office. Everybody who wanted to come to the party was invited to the party to talk about ADUs. And town council drafted a bylaw, which is in your warrant tonight. It gives the town some thoughtful, reasonable considerations when people want to build a detached ADU. So, tonight, I ask you to approve the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that is in the warrant. The planning board does recommend approval of this.
Thank you. The planning board, and through Liz Shea, the town planner, makes a motion to approve Article 20 as presented. Is anything to be heard or any questions on Article 20? Otherwise, we'll take a motion on Article 20. All those in favor, just making sure he's not going to the microphone. Okay, all those in favor of approving Article 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 21 is to delete accessory apartments from the zoning use chart and change the single-family use in some zones to "N," meaning not allowed. Miss, sorry, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board to make a motion for this zoning article.
Ms. Shea.
The planning board recommends approval of this. This goes in hand in hand with the accessory dwelling units. Accessory, accessory dwelling units are allowed in, let me get this language completely straight. That we're trying to strike the special permit use and change it to a no because accessory dwelling units, our single-family residential dwellings are permitted or an allowable use, including any zoning district, where single-family residential dwellings are allowed. So, if we change these from a special permit to a no, they will no longer be allowed there, and the ADUs wouldn't be allowed there. And the planning board recommends approval of this article.
Planning board makes a motion to approve Article 21 as proposed or as presented. Is there anything, any questions on Article 21? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 21 in the planning board's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 22, to correct a typographical error under Transitional Commercial or the TC Zoning District column. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board to make a motion on this zoning article.
Ms. Shea.
Planning board recommends approval of this article. This actually is a housekeeping or a technical correction. It says one thing in the language in the zoning bylaw, and the use chart said something else, so we're just making them say the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Anything to be heard on Article 22? If not, all those in favor of approving the planning board's motion to approve Article 22 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 23, About Our Notice Requirements. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board The Finance Committee defers to the planning board to make a motion on this zoning article.
Ms. Shea?
Planning board recommends approval of this article. This came to us through the, um, building department, the building commissioner, and it makes, um, the language about, um, about our notification cleaner.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Anything to be said on Article 23? If not, all those in favor of approving the planning board's motion to approve Article 23 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 24. I want, yeah, there it is. First, I want, we wanted to send out a shout out and a thank you to so many people who work to get this two hours, two and a half hours together. Kevin Tachi and the people who are working, the cable TV cameras, we greatly thank you and for setting up all the, all the audio. Uh, Assistant Town Planner, Deputy Town Planner, Kevin, who's working the laptop to bring you all this stuff up on the screen, all the volunteers from the Finance Committee. The amount of work that these people do, and they are volunteer residents, you can't say much of how much they do. If you watch them on TV, you see the work they do. We have vacancies on the Finance Committee. If you're interested in joining the Finance Committee, it's a great experience. You learn a lot about how the town works and how things can't work on the government side of things. Please feel free to contact any member of the Finance Committee. Contact myself, Sean Riley, or the Town Manager's Office. Uh, it's great to have a good mix of people on the Finance Committee, and of course, our head custodian, Jamie Hoy, who helps, uh, before and after the meeting. And in that regard, thank you. As we get close to the end here, when you leave, I'm going to ask you to extend the courtesy of dropping off your index cards as you leave outside. We're going to collect them. We're not going to leave them on the floors. And if you are wearing one of the lanyards, we'd also like to collect those from you if you're a non-voter or some other VIP-type person. We need your lanyard back. Okay, moving on to number, Article 24, Ground-Mounted Solar. See if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 175, 21G10, by striking some language in that article. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board to make a motion for this zoning article.
Ms. Shea?
The planning board recommends to pass over this article.
Uh, planning board requ, um, is making a motion not to approve this article. Liz, you want to say just brief couple of words why?
Um, a, this came, again, to us out of, um, our, a previous employee, our zoning enforcement agent asked, um, submitted this, the consideration to the planning board, and the current, um, building commissioner, um, requ, requested that the planning board not approve this article.
So the motion is not to approve Article 24, what we call Passover. That's the motion on the floor. All those in favor, or anything to be heard? If not, on Article 24, all those in favor of passing over Article 24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. It's not unanimous? Sorry. It is almost unanimous. Majority vote passes. Article 25, to amend the Dimensional Density Regulations, uh, to add a footnote, number 16. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board to make a motion for this zoning article.
And Ms. Shea?
And the planning board recommends to pass over this article for the same reasons as the last article.
Uh, the Finance, uh, sorry, the planning board's motion is to pass over Article 25. Any questions on Article 25? If not, all those in favor of passing over Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. That one's unanimous. All right. Moving on to our last and final one. I want to thank also our town clerk for all the work she does behind the scenes, Leanne Madden. And there's been, I just want to compliment all of you. There's been a lot of great debate on both sides of a lot of issues tonight, and I think, I want to thank you for being respectful to one another. I think it's great when we share our different opinions. When we have a larger crowd, it's always a better vote, and I also hope that some of you will get involved in some of the decisions that our town has to make moving forward, whether you're, you want to be involved with the trash discussion, or CPA, or quaroms, or whatever it is. Uh, the more volunteers, the more people, the more voices we have, it's always a better thing for our community. Uh, love this town, I love the people in it, and I really, we welcome you forward. Moving on to Article 26, last and famous, the Snow and Ice Budget. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash to fund this article.
Anybody have any questions on Article 26? Mr. Slack?
Hello, Jerry Slack, Level 21. I'm just curious if the snow plow, the sidewalk plows are going to go further than Oak Street on 18? Maybe to the town line?
What, I didn't hear the ver.
Are the sidewalk plows going to go further than Oak Street on Route 18 and maybe go to the town line? Because they don't, they turn around and they cross the street and they head back down 18.
Mr. Stone from the Department of Public Works. Mr. Slack, you live on Route 18, just past Oak Street, right?
Yep.
All right.
We had a, uh, a meeting with the school several years ago to find out what was important to them sidewalk-wise, and that's why we plow the sidewalks that we plow, is for the school, the ki, the kids that go to school every day.
This last snowstorm we had?
Yeah.
Froze over the next day?